Okay, let's go ahead and start the meeting and Director Echols will either check in or not. Um, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Director Brett Echols. Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert Uten.
Here. Uh, let's go to public comment and um. Mr. Echols.
Raise hand.
Judith, would you go ahead with your public comment, please?
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for having me on this committee, too. And I appreciate the shared burden of the fees and because I've been looking over the budget like I was supposed to. And I recognize the gap of costs and debt. But as I thought about it more and it's not really e- equal. For example, last week I didn't put out a can, not one can, for trash, and yet I guess I paid. I take cardboard and plastics and bottles to OCC. So they're not even in it and I got to thinking that paying that keep the hikes and keep paying, it's getting a little stressful on on the budget and I took note of our neighborhood, our block of the people that live on this side with me, there are ten of us, ten houses. And I guess we all pay the same. And out of the ten, six of them are widow, widower, or a single, one was a single guy. And we don't make nearly as much trash ever. Of the other people that are not singles, they're just doubles. And there don't seem to be any kids around in our ten houses. Across our alley, there are people who put out loads of trash. And tons of it at cardboard, or maybe it's not tens worth, but it sure is space taking. And so I'm wondering if that could be in consideration when when deciding how to do these fees and the hikes, et cetera. If that matters to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I can speak to one of the issues. OCC, we do get credit for what you take to OCC.
How did they know?
Pardon?
How did they know who brought it?
Well, they don't, they don't do it individually. We get a a tonnage amount that is credited to the sanitary district. So. I think, thank you for your public comment. Appreciate it. And let's go on with the meeting. The first item of study is the code enforcement report.
Mr. President, I have public comment for Mr. Mosher, please.
Oh, okay, thank you. Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, President Newton. Since I missed most of your meetings, I apologize if you've covered this at the previous one. But I noticed on the district website, it indicates the headquarters building is still closed to the public. And I'm wondering with the vaccine now available to all the district employees, if any thought has been given to reopening the headquarters. Thank you.
I think we have an opening date in mind in the middle of June.
Do you want me to respond, President Newton?
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mosher, our plan is to bring everyone back on June 21st back to the office. However, we will still have some procedures in place for protecting staff and the public. For example, the doors will still be locked at HQ. However, we will let members of the public in if they're wearing face masks. So they have to be wearing a face mask to come into the facility. It's the same with staff, too. When staffs interacting with each other, we'll still be wearing our face mask. We'll still be practicing some social distancing, not quite six feet. We will be socially distancing like three feet, six feet. But those are some of the procedures we're putting in place. But we are starting to get back to normal beginning on June 21st.
Thank you.
Um, are there any other hands raised? If not, we'll go, not if not, I'm sorry, to step on your if not, we'll go to the code enforcement officers' report, Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Ed Roberts will be giving this report.
Good morning, President Newton and members of the sanitary district board, Ed Roberts. I'll be presenting your April 2021 Code Enforcement Officer, excuse me, Code Enforcement Officer Report. Ladies and gentlemen, for the month of April of 2021, I caught up to seven scavengers in our community. In the report is a map and a brief synopsis of each contact. Nothing really out of the ordinary. I had a couple of folks get away from me during the course of the month, but nothing too battery breaches. There is a map at a glance for the benefit of the board at the end of the report. And as you can see, it looks like we had three on the east side, three on the lower west side, and one over in the Pepper Tree Lane corridor area. Does anyone have any questions in reference to the scavenging activity for this month?
Seeing none, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Oh, wait, wait.
Sorry, I was muted for a second, but yeah, Ed, I see on Pepper Tree Lane, the person you were dealing with said that he had permission from the owners to take the trash from the trash cans. How did you respond to that?
I didn't believe it, sir. Most of those folks out there have placed padlocks on the bins. Those are the folks that do have CMSD cards, have built trash enclosures around. Parking is at a premium, so we do have some violations regarding the trash cans being placed out in the alleyway. But I had reason not to believe that person, sir, and that's one of the excuses I do here. And at that point, it turns into just educating the person despite my personal belief. Just let them know regardless of permission or not, they're not allowed to be scavenging by law or operational code.
And. Good response, good response.
Right, sir, yeah. Just, you know, that's a common one, nothing new.
You know, let me get this, Mike, let me just add a comment. I agree with that. You know, these are all tenants back there and, you know, the city, like you said, the city mandated that they have enclosed carts, but there's a lot of these tenants that are out in their garages. I see, you know, workout rooms, shade tree mechanics. And I can see these guys walking up to someone and saying, hey, can I go through, can I get the bottles and cans out of your bins? And I'm sure some of these tenants go, yeah, go ahead. But overall, they're not contacting the owners of the properties because they don't know who the owners of the properties are. So I agree. I think somebody was trying to blow smoke at Ed.
Putting it very politely, sir, but yes, pretty much. And moving forward, for April, in the course of my patrolling around, I noted about 105 cases. These were, they're all over the place. There's no real rhyme or reason for it. It's just the town. 105, no citations, no, you know, you had to do a couple of door knocks on these. But beyond that, everybody complied. So I've seen pretty good compliance with folks getting the carts out of the way once we put a notice or a second notice on them. One thing I do want to mention to the board of directors, we have a parking is starting to turn into a problem again. So a lot of folks are using our trash carts to block off parking spots. I ran into that and it was starting to get a little heated between some residents over this. So fortunately, the violating party turned out to be pretty reasonable and we got that solved. But you'll notice that started to kind of rear its ugly head again. So we go out there and try to make the person contact with folks regarding that.
Any questions for Ed on the report?
Yeah, Ed, how do you make contact with those people?
Door officer.
Okay.
Yeah, I found the most effective way of getting anything done, especially in this line of work where we have to do a lot of citizen education. Nothing like beats parking the car, walking up to a front door, knocking on the door and trying to diffuse the situation that way.
Do you need a door hanger to relate to that problem or not?
You know, sir, I thought my methodology is a little different. I like fixing the door hangers directly to the trash carts. And I'll bunch up the carts together. Because normally in a parking situation, they'll place them at the property line and at the end of the property line. And they may stick one in between just to delineate their parking spot or their perceived parking spot. I'll put the door hangers on all carts and I'll reverse the cart in the direction so it's abundantly clear someone's been paying attention. And if I don't see any compliance, the next step is to, you know, I know when people are home, when they're not, I do a door knock and then I walk back out to the sidewalk so they don't feel threatened and then just kind of point out the problem. Most people will actually see me tinkering with the trash carts and that'll get their attention and enough just when they see a government vehicle anywhere near their property.
Do you see that problem mostly on the west side of town or what area do you look at it?
You know what, sir, it's actually all over the place. I was, this specific problem that I was addressing, it was off of, it wasn't Nutwood, it's in that that apartment. Yeah, it's kind of in the area where the old Long John Silver's used to be back there. So it's just, it's a densely populated area with apartments, multifamily, and parking is at a premium. So now you see longtime residents kind of cordoning off their parking spots.
Ed?
Yes, sir.
Are there any problems with College Park?
Not that many, ma'am. You know, College Park, you have that mobile home park across Wilson Street. And against density, you get a lot of folks from the apartment communities as well running out of space, so they'll take it over there. But that's, you know, that's outside of our purview. But not really with the trash carts. I do have a couple properties that require a little bit more attention right by the park. But other than that, nothing too severe.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Anything else from the board?
Yeah, Bob, this is Mike, real quick. I can't believe, I can't believe that Officer Roberts remembered Long John Silver's. He's not old enough to remember Long John Silver's.
Officer Roberts is turning 47 on the 14th, sir.
You're just a kid.
I was. I remember it fondly.
Officer Roberts, I had a a request, I guess, and your report is very thorough. What I would like is a paragraph or a couple of sentences on the policy. You know, that causes you, you know, to intercept the scavenging. You know, I think it's our contract with the trash hauler. And then also the trash cans out of public view. Would you just maybe staff and you could get together and and just do a sentence or two about the logic for, you know, why you're doing what you're doing?
Certainly, yeah, it'd be my pleasure. I'll get with staff to make that happen.
And, you know, we must have policies and, you know, just if you would, you would at least enlighten me. I think I know the reason, but I, you know, I need to be reminded. But anyway, thank you, sir. Very good report.
My pleasure. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
We'll go on to the next item. This is one that I requested, you know, I thought it was extremely, it was an extremely important SEPA report a few weeks ago. A lot of people tuned in. One of the very most important regulations that the city and or the districts faces is 1383. And we had Mike Ballier, the staff had Mike Ballier do an update on that. And so I thought it was worth re-listening to.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, we skipped over item number two.
Oh. Oh, okay. We'll go back. Consider appointing one member of the citizens of CAC to fill the vacant to your term ending March 2022. Do any of the directors have suggestions, discussions, or recommendations?
Yeah, this is Mike. I would, based on the two resumes that we received, I have to admit, I was pretty impressed with Mr. Corcoran's credentials. He seems to have a lot of experience in areas that we look towards the CAC for help, especially his organics and other things. So I would recommend Mike Corcoran as the replacement.
Do any of the other directors have?
I just had a question regarding this, they blacked out the addresses and I'm just curious where Cork, where Corcoran lives, if it's going to be a multiplication of more people in a certain area? Or I, because I just don't know where he lives.
I can answer that for you, Director Perry. Mike Corcoran lives in District Three. And applicant Boris Greely resides in District Five.
How many, how many people are in District Three currently?
I can tell you that. Let's see, one, two. There is one person in District Three. And there are two individuals in District Five.
Okay, then I think Mr. Corcoran might be the best selection. I agree with Mike.
Um, any chance we could help him move over into my district?
District Four has no, no participants at this time.
Yeah, I'll work on that.
Your district five, Bob, aren't you in District Five?
I, I. No, Lani, which district am I in?
I believe you are District Five.
Oh.
So you.
Um, well, do any.
And you already have two representatives there already, Bob. And there's only one in District Three, so it seems like a better fit to get more representation. This, and I kind of agree with Mike, because his resume is pretty impressive.
Okay, Arlene, are you going to weigh in?
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we make a motion out of this to, or is he just appointed freely?
No, we probably need a motion.
Okay. So Mike, do you want to make the motion and I'll second it?
Sure. Motion to appoint Mike Corcoran to the CAC.
And I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? If not, Mike Corcoran is, will be seated. Will he be notified and available for the meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to item number three. I watched, I watched this SEPA presentation and this is extremely important regulation from the state of California that's going to severely impact or make an opportunity for the city of Costa Mesa and we're a part of the tonnage that they have to report. So I think this is worthy of time to review. So thank you, thank you very much for staff doing this.
President Newton, Mr. Mosher has his hand raised. Would you like to address him now or after?
Um, let's go ahead with this. Go ahead with Mosher. With Mosher's comment, please.
I can give it at the end if you want, but in the video which I watched before the meeting, Mr. Ballier refers repeatedly to the need to reduce landfill to organics, which includes not just what we call organics and organic cart, but also paper and lumber, he says, by 20 million tons, but he's talking about California as a whole. So I'm wondering if anybody knows what the goal is for Costa Mesa or Newport Beach? And then I've asked this, I think at earlier meetings, do we know what fraction of that stream in Costa Mesa or Newport Beach is coming from the district ratepayers? In other words, are the residents generating the organics that need to be reduced? Or are they coming from some other source, businesses, restaurants, and so forth? That's my comment when I watched it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Let's go ahead with the presentation.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mike Ballier. I'm the City of Costa Mesa's consultant for solid waste recycling and state compliance. And I'm here to explain Senate Bill 1383 to you. SB 1383 is the most aggressive solid waste legislation the state of California has passed in the past 30 years. SB 1383 is going to impact residents, businesses, and property managers. It's designed to change the way you deal with solid waste. SB 1383 is looking to reduce the amount of organic waste we send to landfills by 75% by the year 2025. That is 20 million tons of material. What makes SB 1383 different than AB 939, which is the regulation that says, hey, we had to reduce waste going to the landfill by 50%? That law lets cities develop their own individual programs for reaching that goal. SB 1383, that statewide target, is very specific in what jurisdictions have to do. They have to do things or the jurisdiction will be fined. So in this presentation, I'm going to go over what the Costa Mesa requirements are. The city has to provide an organic waste collection program for all residents and businesses. We have to establish edible food recovery programs, conduct education and outreach to all affected parties. We have to plan for capacity facilities to deal with this material. The city has procurement requirements. We have to buy the material that we are diverting from the landfills. And finally, we have to inspect and enforce compliance. So let's get on with what the issue is the state is trying to address. This table here shows that organic materials, which for the state's purposes include paper, food, untreated lumber, cardboard, green waste, which would be your landscape trimmings. It's about two thirds of the material that's going to the landfill. And of that, food at 18% is a huge component. In addition, we have food insecure individuals, one in eight Californians and one in five children. That's why these regulations also address food waste donation, edible materials. The state really doesn't know how much of what we discard is edible, but they are currently doing studies to develop that information. The driver for this is climate change. This actually has been building sometime in the state of California. Back in 2006, AB 32 and SB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act, actually tied solid waste and the methane generated by organic materials breaking down as a short-term climate pollutant. That gave the state the authority then to start regulating solid waste as a climate impact. Back in 2012, businesses started to be mandated to have recycling programs. In 2016 with AB 1826, businesses and multifamily properties of five units or more started having to recycle their organic waste, although the multifamily folk only had to deal with green waste at that time. Now with these SB 1383 regulations, single-family residents need to recycle their food waste as well as multifamily residents and any business that generates two cubic yards of waste per week or more. Now in Costa Mesa, we're a bit ahead of the game because residents are already recycling their food waste on the single-family side. But we need to get after it on the commercial multifamily properties. So here are the important dates. By 2020, the state wanted us to reduce our organic waste landfilling by 50%. We did not hit that goal. That is why any business with two cubic yards of waste or more has to have a food waste recycling program starting January 1st, 22, when the regulations take effect. And then by 2025, that's when that 20 million ton total, which represents 75% of the organic waste we threw away in 2014, has to be diverted. 20% increase in the recovery of disposed edible food is also the goal there. And again, as I mentioned, the state is currently trying to quantify the amount of edible food that would entail. Okay, this lays out more of what the cities have to do. Again, we mentioned we have to make sure that there's a program provided to all residents and businesses. The edible food recovery program, just as certain large generators of food waste have to have a program. The city has to educate you every year on here are the opportunities to recycle your organic waste. Here's the entities operating in the jurisdiction that can handle your edible food for donation. Later this year, we will be getting actual amounts and products that the city needs to purchase as part of our procurement requirements. And again, we have to make sure that we have capacity places for this material to go. And then lastly, we do need to monitor what folks are doing to make sure we can report compliance levels to the state. I mentioned the edible food donation. These are the tiers of businesses and the types of businesses that will have to donate their food waste, the edible portion of their food waste. So that will include having some type of contract with a pantry, with a volunteer organization, someone to take that edible food. And again, that is a large undertaking, so there will be a lot of educational materials and coordination of resources that the city needs to do to help you be successful with that. As far as the collection services, you see here in the middle of the page, the two container system. That is what residents in Costa Mesa have currently in single-family properties and multifamily properties of four units or less. You have one cart for your green waste and your food waste, another cart for everything else. That puts that everything else cart under a high diversion rate requirement in the regulations. Basically, the facility that sorts that material has to show that 75% of the collected organic waste is being recycled. That may cause a switch to a three-cart system or three-container system, which you see up top. That is most likely what you will get if you are a commercial multifamily property, five units or more, or if you are a business. In that system, the gray container would be for your trash. The green container is again for your organic waste, food waste and or green waste. And then the blue container is recycling. If that level of separation is going on, then it does not have to go to a high diversion rate facility. Contamination monitoring is going to be a reality coming up. We're going to have to make sure folks are learning to put the organic waste in the organic waste container and not the trash. Again, that's how we'll divert 20 million tons. So again, we've mentioned enforcement and inspection. Basically, the city is required by law to pass an ordinance prior to January 1st, 2022 that mirrors the state requirements. In Costa Mesa's case, that ordinance should come before city council sometime in April. Then 2022, 2023 is being advertised is being advertised by the state as sort of a grace period. Focuses on education, changing behaviors. The state isn't mandating that the city fine people, although the state is still withholding the right to fine for non-compliance. January first of twenty twenty-four, that all changes. Again, the fines come with a timetable, so you will certainly have an opportunity to do the right about face to get a program in place and to train and and participate properly. But there will be a state-mandated process that ultimately results in penalties for violators that don't cure violations. So again, SB thirteen eighty-three is a very wide-reaching legislation. It wants to change how we handle solid waste. The solution is simple. Recycle your material in a recycling container, have a separate container for your organic waste, and then keep that organic material out of the trash as much as possible. And we will get to that seventy-five percent goal. As it's been mentioned, education and outreach is a large focus for the city coming into the last part of twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two. We want to make sure everybody's aware of the programs, their individual requirements, and also providing any technical assistance on how best to train and motivate employees to meet these requirements. So there you have it. That's SB thirteen eighty-three. Really, it's it's simple if you have the right program, and that's the city's responsibility to make sure that you have the containers for your food waste, for your other organic waste, for your recyclable material, and for your trash. The city will be here to help with technical assistance and education. And I look forward to helping in any way I can. And the city thanks you in advance for your your cooperation and helping us comply with state mandates.
Hey, Scott, can I ask you a question? Scott, are you on there?
Yes, 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 go ahead.
Based on what he was telling us today, is our two-can system adequate to meet the requirements?
Well, that's what we're still trying to determine. We we one day we want to come back to have that discussion with the board. Is a three-can system viable for the district? I I do foresee some challenges with three-cart system. We do know that residents do like the two-cart system. It's easy to manage, less less space required. If we do go a three-cart system, it's going to take a ton, a ton of education, almost just kind of like to the extent where we did the organic recycling program. We had, you know, nearly a half, nearly a dozen workshops. So it might come down to that, you know, that's the kind of something we need to talk, think through. Okay, if we go to three-count system, one, will it get us to that mandate? And if we think it does, and what kind of education need to go out there? And it's going to be massive, in my opinion. But our goal is to one day to bring that back to the board for discussion.
A question too. Scott? I was wondering. Now, will the city turn around and put something together as news to the public? Or a flyer or something so that they could be aware of what's going on? It's not all on our head. In other words, you know, for us to say something without the city's backing, we should be one.
Yes, and and that's that's our our plan is is to collaborate with the city and making sure that both the city and the district's message to the public is is consistent. Making sure we're all on the same page. I know Nubia has been in discussion with the city's sustainability manager. I forget her name, but she they've been in communications and talking about how to collaborate together. But yes, that that is the plan is to make sure our both our messages are are standardized and and we're saying the same thing.
Thank you.
I got one more question.
Oh, go ahead, Art.
Okay, I just want to make sure, do we have representation every time that the sustainability committee meets that we have somebody there present? Or not?
The sustainability committee?
Because we should have somebody on that committee.
Yes, and it probably would be a good idea if we are on that committee, so we can we can reach out to the city.
Because at the last city council meeting, they just not, I mean, two times ago, they discussed the committee and their goals. And I just want to make sure that we're right there with them, getting, letting them know what we think also.
Sure, yes, it's a good idea.
Bob, this is Mike. You know, I I I think as a as an agency, we've done a really, really good job of communicating to our constituents, people that we affect, what we're trying to do to meet these goals with 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 the organics. I I mean, it's obvious. I mean, our our organics program is extremely successful. I I think it really depends on what the city's going to do. And, you know, I agree, we need to make sure that we have a dual message and that we're all in this working together. But the city really needs to get off the dime and start working hard at contacting the 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 big contributors. I mean, restaurants, hotels, you know, supermarkets, all these people that really are the bulk of what thirteen eighty-three is gearing towards. City needs to get really strong. So I I guess I agree with Art. We need to make sure our presence with the sustainability committee or whatever it is. We need, we need to be strong advocates that the city get off the diet. They haven't done anything for the last couple of years. That's an overstatement. I apologize. They've done very little over the last few years to make sure that they're in tune with this. And I know they've got other priorities, and the pandemic has caused a lot of delays, but the city, it's going to cost the city, which ultimately costs all of us, you know, people who live in the city. So we need to be really strong with the with the city and have them get 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 their programs moving. That's my soapbox.
Yeah, well, I I met with Salam, the Senator, their sustainability manager and Mike Belier. And, you know, it was about an hour-long meeting. By the end of this year, the city is supposed to have the ordinance in place that directs how this can be done. You know, and 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 I I would agree with Art and Arlene that, you know, we need to be, the city needs to either direct what the sanitary district does, but we definitely need to be you know, hand in hand with them. This is, this is going to fall, for the most part, on the city. We, I think our opportunity, and we need to understand our opportunity, and I think Mike Belier, you can be a part of that. Education on the organics program, you know, what to put in that, what to put in that green bin, and what not to put in the mixed waste cart, you know, I think will become increasingly important. And, you know, we've sort of understood those concepts, but our, I I think our part is education, 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 and it's strictly related to the, you know, the the use of the the green cart. But I don't know that for sure.
Can I put in a plug when you get done?
Sure, go ahead, Arlene.
Okay. Okay, you know, I have said this over and over, but I I don't think anybody listens. We've tried to get the city with us, the city council and our board to have a joint meeting to sit down and talk about this. And then from there, we could place somebody, you know, to be on it all the time from our group. But I I really think we need to get our act together as council and as the directors.
I got one last thing, Bob.
Okay, Art, go ahead.
As I'm listening to Mike, where will all the commercial organics carts go to get processed? You know what I mean? Because the only place I know is either at CRNR's plant or to have another process to get rid of it.
Yeah, I think I think I think the, there must be more materials recovery places with the other trash vendors, but some of the trash vendors actually do use, like you, like you suspect, they do use CRNR. You know, the 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 large multifamily, the businesses and commercial entities in the city are going to have to do a a yeoman's job. This is going to cost the city a lot of money, you know, to you know, to figure out how to how to implement this this regulation. And the the, I think the ordinance is headed for the for the city council by the end of this year, according to Mike Belier, when, you know, when I met with he and the sustainability commit director. And 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 I I have said all along, you know, don't don't fear the fines that the state will impose, but I believe they're finally going to get some gumption. This this thing is this thing is going to make the cities wake up.
Exactly right.
And we're we're a tiny portion of that, and we're already ahead of the curve, but we've got to understand what else we need to do. And and then quickly, because, you know, three years will lapse in no time at all. Or less than three years now, two and a half years.
I think we can come up with a good plan.
Okay, does anyone else have any input or discussion or requests? You know, I I think I think Moser's comment about the the twenty tons, we need to ultimately know what the city of Costa Mesa needs to ultimately know what they're responsible for in that in the twenty tons. And I'm interested in, you know, how much of that is the green fake, green waste that's still going to the landfills from the eighty-three percent of the businesses in Costa Mesa? The the large, the large family, the multiple units, the city and the commerce, and they've, they just, the city just has so much work cut out for them. Any any other director's input, comments? Or public? It's just astounding, though, what the state is directing the cities to do.
Mr. President, I see Mr. Moser has his hand raised.
Jim, do you have further comment? Citizen Moser, are you there?
Yes, I forgot to unmute myself. Thank you. I I just wanted to emphasize again, the twenty million tons that Mr. Belier was talking about is the statewide reduction goal. It would be good to, at a starting point, I think the district needs to know what Costa Mesa is reporting in this category. And then at least we would have some handle, because we know from our own reports how many, how much is in the green carts. But we don't know what what the total tonnage is that Costa Mesa is currently reporting and needs to reduce by seventy-five percent. So I think that one number would help a lot. Compare it to what our monthly reports are in the green cards.
Well, I think Consultant Belier will ultimately have to, you know, figure that out. He he's the single, single most important source in the city with information. And I think that we, I think staff has recommended that we continue or to to retain him, you know. He he's probably the only one in the in the city that would know that number, and maybe the sustainability coordinator would, but you'd think that would be an easy number to get, but we'll 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 see. Any other comments on the on this? This current regulation?
I just had one, and that is, I'm very concerned about this three-cart idea because it sounds good and it'd be great, except the community just doesn't have a place for that third cart. And we will have an uprising off of that. So that's what we have to consider too.
Yep, yeah, that's that is a consideration we'll have to deal with in the in the near future. Any any other director's input or discussion? I I, you know, I don't know how, I I believe Art is correct. You know, we we Art and Arlene, and I think the whole board agrees that we we have to improve our collaboration with the city and or the staff has to educate the our board on, you know, what our requirements are to help the city. If if there's no other input, I I think we'll go on to item number five.
Yes, Mr. President, item number four, we're we're going to, we're going to pull that item, correct?
Oh, yeah, okay.
So so thank you, Mr. President. So item number four has been a request by CRNR to pull this item. They want to meet with staff to further discuss some of the concerns we addressed, we identified in the staff report. And we we are happy to to meet with CRNR to discuss, discuss those items. So so staff is recommending this item be pulled, and we'll bring it back for consideration at your June eighth study session meeting.
So we have, we have time then?
Correct.
I have a quick question, Bob, if I could ask. Hey, Scott, I know Mark Davis was supposed to meet with with CRNR. Do you know if that's taking place?
Yes, that that has occurred.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the other directors have any input on whether we pull this item or not? I'm in concurrence with with staff's request.
I see Mr. Moser's hand is raised.
Citizen Moser?
Yes, thank you again, President Uten. This this item was one of the main reasons I was attending today, so I just have a question about this. The spreadsheet that was provided said that the residents in Newport Beach are not charged for trash collection. They're they're actually charged a fee that is supposed to represent the differential between what it costs to recycle versus what it would take cost to take trash to the landfill. So I'm just seeking clarification in the staff report. It breaks down the increases CRNR is asking for into three parts. The second of those is a processing fee for recycling disposal. It says the recycling, the the amount that is recycled, the district is being charged or its ratepayers fifty-four dollars ninety-eight cents per ton. My question is, I looked up on the county website, if that trash was taken directly to the landfill, it would cost fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents per ton to dispose of it at the landfill, if that was allowed. So is CRNR saying it there because of the revenue they get from the recycling? It actually costs less to go through the MRF than it would be to take the trash directly to the landfill. I don't know if I'm expressing that clearly, but they seem to be saying the cost to recycle through the MRF when they get the revenue from what they sell as a result of the recycling costs fifty-four ninety-eight, and taking it directly to the landfill would cost actually more than that, fifty-nine sixty-seven. Am I understanding that correctly? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for your question. Staff will review that. Any any other input on item number four? It appears, I think we're all in concurrence that we need time to discuss a lot of issues that we have and CRNR has with this this program going forward or this agenda report. So if none, let's move on to item number five, which is a continuing discussion of our assessment criteria for our sewer force mains, rebuilding and or replacing our sewer force mains. Scott, is Mark going to do this?
I'll be, I'll be thinking, Mr. President, I'll be giving this presentation, then Mark will be assisting me answering any questions you may have. So this was requested by the board directors to to bring it back for for discussion and So this was requested by the board directors to, to bring it back for, for discussion and and the board wanted to know what, what criteria we use to, for replacing and rebuilding our sewer force mains because we have been very proactive in replacing and rebuilding our force mains. But, so the board was, well, what, what are we, what criteria we use to determine which one, uh, is being replaced at what time? And just for the, for the public's knowledge, you know, force main is, is basically, um, a pressurized pipe that, that pushes the water, um, through, uh, to, uh, topography areas that, that you cannot, um, move the wastewater versus gravity. So you gotta some, because of the topography of Costa Mesa, there are areas in the, in the, in the community where you gotta push the, the water, uh, at a high velocity to get it to a gravity line. Uh, the problem with, with the force mains is that if they rupture or they fail, it's like a geyser of, of wastewater, you know, spraying the community and that can be a detrimental health impact, uh, to the public and to the environment. So it's why it's very important to, to ensure that the force mains are maintained properly and also, um, you know, replaced before the end of a useful life. And as you see on your staff reports, uh, as, as I mentioned earlier, we have been very proactive in replacing our force mains. Currently, we have, uh, twenty, uh, we have four, four point eight miles force mains, uh, that, that are are, are from twenty, uh, lift stations. And, uh, the, the velocity or the force, the velocity of those force mains varies, you know, from our highest, which is Eldon, at the three thousand seven hundred fifty gallons per minute to our lowest, which is Abumor, which is only forty-five gallons per minute. Uh, but as you see on, on, on the staff report, uh, within the last, uh, ten years, we've replaced, uh, nine force mains costing nearly four million dollars. And we have an additional two force mains that are underway, uh, as we speak, uh, which is nineteenth in Iowa force mains, uh, costing nearly five hundred thousand dollars. So by the end of the year, we'd have over fifty percent of our force mains, uh, rehabilitated and are replaced. So what do we, how do we, how do we, what's criteria do we use to evaluate when the force mains are to be replaced? And as mentioned in the staff report, it's really quite simple. Uh, all we really, we're looking for is, is the age, you know, how old is the pipe? What is the pipe material, size, uh, the flow? Uh, we also look at the, the proximity to the waterways. Obviously, if it's close to the waterways, then that's going to be a higher priority for us. Uh, we also look at, you know, has there been any past issues with, with, um, the, the, the force main? Uh, what is the consequences if this force main, uh, fails? So we take all those into consideration. Now, there are other, there are technologies that, that we can use to determine the condition of force mains, as, as I listed in the staff report. Uh, like there's infrared, in- infrared red thermal, uh, their acoustic emissions, uh, soil surveys. Uh, so there, there are a variety of technologies you can use, but they can be a little bit of expensive. And we know that from his, from our, from our past practice that you might recall back in two thousand and twelve, we hired a company called Pipeline Inspection and Condition Analysis Corp. And they use, uh, an innovative technology. It's called electromagnetic sensors, which goes down inside the, the pipes and, and it measures the wall thickness. And we did this on twenty-third and Santa Ana force mains. And, and, and those force mains weren't quite old at the time. And, and we learned from this technology that that the, 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 that the thickness was, was, was not as thick as we thought. It was very thin. In fact, uh, Rob Hamers, our, our district junior at the time, determined that those force mains, imminent failure was, 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 um, possible for those, for those force mains. So using that technology and that information we receive, that's all we, we rely on those force mains and, and, you know, preventing any, uh, uh, future failures. The problem with this technology though, and why we haven't used it again in other force mains is that before you use this type of technology, you had to clean the pipe. And the way you cleaned it was called pigging, which is kind of like this, it's, uh, it's like this Nerf. The best way to explain it is like, it looks like a Nerf football. It's like a spongy sponge kind of, uh, Nerf football, I guess you can say. And, and you have to push it through the force mains to, so it cleans out all, all, all the, uh, inside the pipes. The problem with the, the, the pigging is that you have to go through valves. And sometimes they could get stuck in the valves, it gets stuck in the pipe. And if that happens, then you got a nightmare on your hands. And, and it was a challenge getting it through our valves at the L, at the, um, Santa Ana and, um, um, twenty-third force mains. So even though we were successful, we decided not to use technology again because it's just, it's just some challenges. And, and again, it was quite expensive. Uh, the using the, the PICA, um, technology was about over seventy-one thousand dollars. So again, it's, it's, it's expensive. So using our, our traditional method of, of what I just mentioned earlier, how we evaluate the criteria is we, we identified, uh, several more force mains that, that will be rehabilitated or replaced within the next four to five years, which is on your list, uh, on, on page two. And so we believe, um, by twenty twenty-five, which is, you know, fifteen years since we did the first force mains, we will have rehabilitated ninety percent of our force mains, uh, which I, I believe is, is, is fantastic. I mean, I don't think you can find too many wastewater injuries that are proactive as we are in replacing these or rebuilding these, these force mains. So that is a nutshell, what, what we, as our criteria, what we use to evaluate a force mains and myself and Mark are, are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, my question is, you know, with that, with that very thorough explanation, why do we need a district engineer?
No comment.
All right, shoot, shoot me now, Mr. President Newtons. Sorry, Mark.
Bob's just getting ready for a comedy show.
And he's, and he's very good at that, by the way.
Yeah, I, I watched him on a comedy show last night and, and, and I beg to differ.
Uh, and anyway, uh, uh, do, do any of the directors have any comments? You know, I, I think you were pretty aggressively, proactively headed in, in the right direction, um.
That was a good report, actually.
I understand it, exactly.
That was good.
Thank you.
Um, my, if, if no, no other comments, then we can go on to, um, um, closing items. Uh, thank you for that very good report.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do any of the directors have any oral communications or directors' comments?
Yeah, Bob, this might, I have a couple of quick, hopefully future, uh, agenda items for study session.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, Scott, one of the things that we talked about a while back, uh, and we had seen through CRNR's annual report was their, uh, incineration program. And I wondered, and I, I think Mike is still on the call with this. And I, I wonder if at a future study session, we couldn't get kind of a, you know, a Tencent, uh, review and description of, of what CRNR is doing with their incineration program. Uh, I, I'm not, I, I think it's at the MRF facility, if I'm not mistaken, Scott. You, you remember what we're talking about?
I think, I think it's, uh, at, at the, um, uh, cement making plant.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh.
And I'm not, I'm not looking for an overblown presentation. I'm just like, I, I, I think it's one of those things that we need to be aware of is a, a, you know, a, a solid waste district and just, just kind of a brief report on how that operates and if there's any potential for us in the future.
Yes, that's, that, you recall, that is one of our goals in our, in our strategic plan. So, so we do intend on bringing that back to the board for discussion at one time, which is, it just have been, have been ready to do that yet, but.
Okay, okay, that, that, that's fine. It's fine. The, the other item, I, I think we're probably going to have to start talking about, um, with the census completed and now that we're a districted district, if you are, you know, whatever we call it, um, i- at some point, we're going to have to reevaluate with, with the Center for Demographic Research on how our districts are made up. Do, do we have any kind of timelines on, on when we need to do that or, um, is there, yeah, maybe we need to check with Alan to see if there's any legal requirements that we have to figure out on our districting.
Um, so I'm going to defer to, to Nalani if she has any information. If not, we can, we can bring that back for, um.
That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, we're going to have to check with Alan, Mr. Vice President, on that, and then we will get back to the board.
Okay, thank you. I, 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 I don't know if there is a require, I think there, there obviously has to be something built into the, into the law. So just an update so that we can be prepared for that would be terrific.
Sure.
Mike, I, I, I can make some input on that. Uh, I, I don't know where I heard this, but uh, the census data will not be available until near the end of this year. Right. Near, near the end of this year is when those, uh, when, when those studies ha- have to be completed, I believe.
I, I heard, yeah, I heard that too, Bob, that the census stuff, especially with the pandemic and they extended it out, is going to really be affect or looked at at the end of this year.
Yeah, the Center for the Demographics, um, place probably has that answer also.
Yeah.
You know, they're going to be burdened with, uh, trying to help us figure that out. And I think, I think time is of the essence, uh, because once we do that, then there's a long process to go through, you know, to get board, to finally get board approval of any potential changes.
Absolutely. And, and I, and whether or not we need to take it to the public or not, I think we need to know that.
Um, well, we have in the past taken that, you know, at least the C H C made recommendations and the public was allowed to weigh in on the potential
Yeah.
redistricting, uh, numbers. Anyway, yeah, good questions. Any, any other oral communications and directors' comments?
I wanted to make a comment. Um, the nominations for, uh, well, CSDA's board seat is open right now. And we should be receiving something of electronic kind of, um, ballot so that we can vote on it. And hopefully we'll have it on our, this next meeting, the public hearing. Because there's deadlines and we need to get in there. And there's nine people that are candidates for it. And Joe McKinsey is, uh, rerunning again. But then there's eight more that are running too. So we need to look at this and be able to have our president, you know, be able to sign the paper that's needed and, um, be part of this. So I just wanted to make sure that we get in on that.
Um, yeah, um, I think there was an explanation of the deadlines at ISDOC, the last ISDOC meeting now. And I think staff is, is aware of them.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Any, any other directors' input and communications comments? Uh, if not, uh, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for
Thank you.
considerable input.
Thanks, everybody.
Good meeting, good meeting.